Or be able to turn right into that new access road. And that's going to be the front of the building. And it's looking straight at you. And that's why we rotated at 45 for that approach. So now in the rendering, we've kind of dropped down to more of an eye level as opposed to kind of hovering in a helicopter. But this is the main public drop off entry area. You can begin to see this canopy right here. One of the things we've talked about, if you go down to City Hall, you're going to see it. So I can't claim this as an original idea. But we've talked about incorporating some photometric panels there.
I'm sorry.
For the canopy. Photometric panels for the canopy right here. And I just commented, if you go down to City Hall and you look at their covered parking, I can't claim that as an original idea, but something that we've talked about internally that we could possibly incorporate here.
That's not currently budgeted?
Yes.
Yes, it is currently budgeted.
For this right here.
Okay. And that would be powering what?
It'll go into a power bank and our electrical engineers will talk to the building user groups and determine how to distribute from there.
But it would be all used on site?
Yes, I would anticipate that. Again, we're not hovering in a helicopter. This is kind of what you would expect to see if you were walking up and approaching the main entry. So of course, it'd be a crosswalk. You heard Nick speak previously regarding, we call them crash bollards. But you can see crash bollards here in that entry plaza area to prevent somebody from a vehicle ramming the front door. Those aren't your typical bollards that most of you are accustomed to seeing. These are deep, that have footings and foundations. Now, we're just kind of beginning to, yes, Marty.
Marty, your microphone.
I'm not seeing handrails there, but then maybe it's going to be there. Remember, that may look like it's real easy for the average person, but for someone who has visual problems or someone with balance problems, you're just going to need some handrails there.
What are the handrails for?
There aren't any stairs.
There's no stairs. That's striping, that's striping across asphalt.
It's not stairs.
No, it's just a crosswalk, painted paint on asphalt.
The line there looks like stairs, but...
A little deceiving. The image on the next rendering on the next page is a little more helpful, just to show it's just a standard crosswalk, striping.
So, yeah, Marty, those are the painted on the asphalt.
Thank you.
So again, we're beginning to kind of spin around the building now. So you can see the crash bollards. Nick spoke about the paving out front in this entry plaza area being something a little more decorative. You can see the dome, you can see the building off in the distance. So you can see, now you can begin to see the two story down here at this end of the building. This is the judges' chambers and court administration up on the second floor. Everything else is at grade. Ending on around the building. So this is where, this is where the inmate release resource center as an alternate bid would be, because this is the inmate release. Right here's our bus stop. And this area right here is likely going to be signed, you know, law enforcement vehicles only beyond this point, because the public, this is the loop drive that comes around, right? We don't necessarily want them going back here because there's nowhere to go. This is the secure sheriff's office and jail parking area. And there's our vehicle Sallyport, so they can enter from either end of this parking lot.
One component of that, too, is that opaque precast wall there that conceals the Sallyport and the sheriff's office and jail parking from the public side of the facility.
That's a good point. And the reason that we did that here, and you'll see it when I spin around the building even more so, the PUD that was recently adopted, I think it's 150 feet to the center line of a road, you can't have fencing. So that's why we put that there, to comply with the PUD.
I just got one more quick question for the entrance part of the building. The bollards that are there, the crash area that's there, is that wide enough for accessibility for wheelchairs?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I could show you photographs of where we've incorporated something very similar. So now, if you turn the page, we're going to kind of spin, continue spinning around the building. So now I'm overlooking the secure sheriff's office and jail parking area. There's that screen wall that we just talked about. Over here is the main entry. This is our vehicle Sallyport. And right here is staff entrance. Then we also are releasing inmates out the front near the alternate bid inmate release resource center. You can begin to see, this is the raised roof area that I spoke about before, as far as how we would get natural light into the courtrooms. And this big block back here, this is the general population housing area. So the future addition, hopefully not in my lifetime, would occur back here. That's the area we're preserving. One other thing I want to point out real quick, Marty. These two windows right here, those two windows, if you look on the floor plan and kind of try to match things up, these windows right here go into the mental, both the male and female mental health day rooms. So we're really trying to flood that area with some natural light. Marty.
Would that be artificial turf or grass or what, or plantings?
As we get more detailed in the design, it'll start to show that. It's probably mulch planting islands, not turf, or turf, natural turf, not artificial.
Thank you.
All right. So if you turn the page, we're continuing to spin around kind of the back of the building. I think this one kind of really helps you visualize what's going on at the back of the building. So this is the loop drive that Nick talked about that goes, if you follow it all the way to the end, that goes in to kind of the back of the sheriff's office and jail secure parking. This is the access drive that goes into delivery area, loading dock, generators, chillers, that kind of thing sitting out here. This area right here, this is the justice parking area for justice staff. This is the secure justice parking area. So there'll be a gate there, just like there will be at the other secure parking for the sheriff's office and jail. This is the other opaque wall that Nick spoke about previously, as far as providing that here, just to provide some added protection, because Hunter Valley Road is right here, right?
What's, what's the difference, who parks in that little area that's secure versus outside of it?
Well, this conversation was originally conceived, we were, I think, talking to prosecutor's office and the judges. They were somewhat concerned regarding, you know, going out to an unprotected parking area. I know that there were some females in particular that had concern going out, you know, when it was dark out. So in further conversation with the judges, there was a strong consensus that there was a very strong preference for some secure parking area, at least for the judges, elected officials, prosecutor, public defender, those types of areas. The other thing we've talked about is since it's not conceivable to secure all of the justice parking area, if there is, you know, a staff member, whether male or female, that knows that they're going to be working late, if they want to park in there, there would be some areas allocated for that purpose. They could go move their car, pull it in there, so they're in close proximity to the staff entrance when they leave the building. Right, turning the page, now you begin to see just kind of a zoomed in area of the exact thing that we were talking about. This is the secure justice parking area. This is the sliding gate that I was referring to. There is a staff entrance right here in very close proximity to the stairs, an elevator that goes up to the second floor for the judges' chambers and court administration. There's also at the very end of that long public corridor that stretches down to this exterior wall, we have another staff entrance over here. So if justice staff, you know, are parking over here and they want to use that door, they can utilize that door as well. I'm continuing to spin around the building. Marty.
Well, you know, we are in Bloomington, Indiana, where we sometimes have a lot of snow. So what's the drainage for when, where to put the snow piles? Or is it assumed that they'll be hauled off? I mean, I'm sure you've already talked to people about this, so you can tell me about that later.
Very good point.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't end up with no way to get in and out of there because of all the snow.
Yeah, good point, especially after last winter. All right. So we're continuing to spin around the building. And this is where you can really begin to see the upper level court, judges' chamber and court administration area. This is another area where we're incorporating a lot of composite metal panel, both as a design feature, but also to help reduce some of the costs, so that we're not extending precast veneer up on the second floor. So now you can kind of begin to see, if you're looking down the length of the building, what that would look like. So this, what you're seeing here is a precast concrete veneer panel, more around the back of the building where the inmates are being housed, where the maintenance areas are, that's where we would utilize the insulated precast concrete panel. And we're going to finish, again, at the front of our building where we started. So we've kind of spun all the way around the building, kind of showing you some views of what the building would look like. So if you look at this page, again, if you look in this report, you will see what we refer to as disciplined narrative. So all of the disciplines, site settle, structural, architectural, mechanical, electric, plumbing, fire protection, everybody has a narrative in here that was also provided to the Wettel Garmung Smoot in their packet when they prepared their cost estimate. If you're having trouble falling asleep tonight, I would encourage you to read that. The page that I know everybody is eagerly awaiting, and I'm going to turn it over to Chris Healy with Wettel Garmung Smoot.
All right, thanks, Scott. Yeah, I'm Chris Healy, I'm with Wettel Brothers, part of the WGS team. What you'll see in front of you is the updated budget based on 237,161 square feet, 404 beds, also the shell space for the additional 96 beds as described, full sheriff's office and jail, full justice center. As of this design and what you've seen, total construction cost is 194 million, 90,689 dollars, with an added soft cost of 30 million, 409,429, bringing the total project cost to 224 million, 500,118. Down below, you have the add alternates, I want to highlight that it is an add for the items that were highlighted in the day rooms and the inmate resource center. So they're both alternates, one and two, they're the same cost because of the same scope. So it's just mirror image of each other, just flipping the pods in which they're in. Both of those are 2,458,805. And then the inmate resource center, 896,656 dollars. Those are your alternates to be considered.
Chris, just for folks in the public and maybe some of us that might need a refresh, when we talk about the term soft costs, can you remind us what that, because it's an amount?
Yeah. So the soft cost is cost for design, professional services, it's the furnishings in the building. There are, oh gosh.
Property purchase.
Property purchase, sorry, also included in there. So anything that is an actual construction expense associated with the job.
Also, just as a reminder, when we presented the pre-design phase in February, I believe the hard construction cost or the total project cost estimate was 237 million. And if you recall, the commissioners made a motion with the caveat that we would proceed but continue to look for ways to reduce costs. So that was obviously a driving point from February to where we are here today. The last page is an updated timeline. I'm not going to go through everything here on the first page because it's all been completed. But if you look at the second page over here on the slide, you'll see February 27th, that's when we presented the pre-design phase. We forwarded the schematic design packet information that I referenced before, as well as a lot of additional drawings to Wettel Garmung Smoot from July 28th to August 1st, and that's what they used to prepare their cost estimate. And we're here today presenting schematic design to the county. And as I mentioned before, there are two other subsequent design phases, both design development and construction documents that will follow. And of course, we have to have approval from the county to commence the next design phase. You can see that we're, we're still showing occupancy in June 2029, being substantially complete.
Thank you. Back on the previous page, the project cost estimate page, it would be immensely helpful to have a itemized budget for those four bullet points at the top. It would be helpful to have it broken out as to the cost per square foot, that's always helpful to have as well. I mean, I know that number changes all the time, but the difference between the budgeted costs for the justice center, different costs for the jail, it would be helpful to just see those broken out a little bit more. We might have to go into like immense detail, but it would be helpful to have that.
Yes, Counselor Biddle.
Can I go back to the water? So having lived on some properties before where there have been water issues, I want to know where all the water from the roof is going?
From the road, you said?
The roof.
Oh, the roof. So it kind of goes back to, I forget who, but somebody, I think it was Marty, maybe asked about the stormwater basins that we have built onto our site. So I'm not a civil guy.
Right.
But I deal with this on every project. I rely on the professionals that do do this every day. But we are required to hold the amount of stormwater, you know, on our own site. We can only discharge it at the same rate that it's currently discharged. We can't increase. So we will size the detention pond areas to hold the water on our own site and discharge at its current rate, so we're not affecting people downstream.
The roof will have roof drains that drain, connect into those detention basins, and then, as Scott said, that will...
And what might be the timeframe on the holding of water? I mean, are we talking mosquitoes? I mean, what could happen there in that water basin?
So...
Yeah, I mean, our civil engineers, as we get further in design, will have to look at rates of that. But I think there was, there were some favorable comments to having some standing water, but I think on this site, it might release almost immediately. Or we could size the basin so that there's no standing water. But we have to really dive into those details in the next phase of the project.
Thanks. Counsel Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everybody, for your presentation. It's admirable that vendor takes in requirements, comes up with a wonderful design. I mean, I can tell about the attention to detail here that has gone into this. So some of my comment isn't really directed at you, because you took what was given to you and you built a drawing off of it. But I think the one schematic question I have for you all before we get into other conversations with other folks today, is if this project had to be phased, where we had to select or prioritize what gets built first based on the budget constraints placed on us by the state of Indiana, and of course, our own decisions about whether or not to use our tax dollars in this way, is there a way to phase this project and prioritize certain aspects of it? Or break it into sections, or design it in a manner where we build what we minimally need to meet ACLU requirements, safety requirements, and then revisit other options over a period of time?
So if the project had to be phased, and I know it's a lot riding on the Senate Bill I state legislation, to me, and I'll let Wettel Garmung Smoot chime in if they feel differently from a cost perspective, or just a construction sequencing perspective. But to me, it seems that Phase 1 would naturally be the sheriff's office and jail. I think that's also the highest priority for the community, with the secondary phase being the justice center. Is that, I don't know if I answered your question?
No, that helps. And, you know, these are a solution, not the solution. There are obviously ways to think about the other aspect of co-location here and what that cost really means to the county. I don't think that's the county council's job to explain to the public the cost of co-location. It's really the offices that feel that that's the better solution for taxpayer dollars. But that's not your problem. You were given requirements, you gave us a schematic, you answered my question about what could potentially be phased. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Anybody else? Counsel Wilkes.
This isn't, I have a couple of questions. But the first one is, you mentioned various windows and skylights and the natural light, which I think is fantastic. When someone is in the general population portion of the building, are there any, besides the skylights, are there any windows or any other natural sources of light coming in from the sides?
Within the day rooms, no. And one of the primary reasons is because most modern jails, if any of you have toured any of ours or any of our competitors, most of them are built with what we refer to as a perimeter chase, that all the plumbing backs up to, and that way we can maintain without, do maintenance without having to go into the secure perimeter. So that really, it can be done, but it's more costly to add exterior windows, because now you have essentially two walls, we're adding windows in, so it just doubles. So most modern jails, the natural light requirement is achieved by skylights. However, there is, and I know this was brought up and discussed when we presented in February, but rec areas, that we refer to as indoor/outdoor recreation areas, where what that is, is there's an insulated overhead coiling door that can raise up. And then there's a security barrier there, it's just an open grating, but they can get natural light, natural ventilation, that type of thing. But it's up high. And that's really what precipitated the conversation back in February. And I think somebody made a comment, you mean, I can't, or an inmate can't touch grass? And that's what has precipitated the outdoor rec. You know, in consultation with the transition team, operationally, if they so choose to utilize the outdoor rec that we would provide, be providing in the evacuation yard, we have made that provision.
And would that outdoor rec involve what you're talking about with, it sounds like a garage door thing?
Yeah, not, yeah, not the outdoor.
Right.
It's the indoor/outdoor.
So that's not incorporated in this plan, though, right?
No, it is. Yes. It's within the secure perimeter, so it's obscured, so it can't point and show you.
No worries then. Got it.
Yes.
This might, can I ask one more? And this might not be something that you feel like comfortable estimating, but as you're going along, I'm thinking about the staffing levels for specifically the jail and side of things, and how this design change from our current, which obviously is inefficient already, but how will the staffing levels change?
Honestly glad you brought that up. I know that this was a topic that was brought up in February, and I think it was Peter in particular, that, you know, said, hey, in addition to our construction costs, which will eventually go away, because the building will eventually be paid off, the cost will never go away as staffing and operation. And you heard Nick previously talk about our next design phase, which is our design development phase. Now that the building is beginning to take shape, our engineers are going to become much more involved in running heating and cooling, calculation loads, and sizing equipment. And of course, your mechanical equipment dictates your electricity needs and those types of things. So we will be running an operational analysis to give some sense as to how much gas, how much electricity, how much water is anticipated, and compare and contrast that to what you're currently spending at the justice center. Now, that's just one part of the component. Second part is staffing. So we will also, now that these floor plan is beginning to settle down and take shape, we'll run what we refer to as a staffing analysis, to where we can compare and contrast, you know, every post, and compare and contrast that to your existing justice center.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I see Counsel Hawke has pulled her microphone, so that means she has something to say. But before I go to Counsel Hawke, I'll go to Counsel Decker-Hawke. And then I apologize, when this meeting was scheduled, I already had a previous thing at 1:00. So I am going to be leaving here soon, but I will hand it over to Pro Tim Iverson to finish taking over. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I kind of want to follow up to make sure I understand everything I need to understand here. And I appreciate immensely the presentation, seeing the schematics and kind of getting this in my head. If, I kind of want to follow up on Counselor Henry's question, if the, and help me to make sure I understand it, if the jail sheriff option went in a phase by itself, that's, the approximate cost of something like that were 60 to 80, 100 million plus roughly?
We haven't evaluated it in that level yet, but it's probably upwards of that.
And that's still going to exceed the bonding capability that we can do as a county anyway, because the state's basically told us, you can't do anything other than buy some bubblegum next Friday, and we're going to double check you on that. Mr. Cockrell, and I'm not going to put you guys on the spot for that, but Mr. Cockrell, I have that right, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, and this is part five, so if you want me to wait till part five?
Yeah, can we hold off to make sure other council members have questions?
Well, and I'm not quite done yet. I guess the last part of this is if, and I'm open to any idea that gets us to completion, but phasing is still going to extend at a greater cost to my taxpayers' construction. So essentially, if my daughter in fifth grade decides she'd like to run for my council seat one day, she hits age and seeks it, she'll be in here figuring out how to get the courts and public defender and prosecutor over there, only she'll be doing that at a much greater cost and amount than what we have now, even at our extended from 2009 timeline. Am I saying this right?
Correct. If the project becomes more linear in timeframe to do it, the cost is going to increase.
Okay. And with some exception here or there, maybe, as we talk about it, I haven't seen anything yet that is not a public service entity doing its function. Now, there's some trimming that can always happen, but I just, I'm trying to figure out where, because we've, we had this set last year. We had a correction tax that was well debated. And one thing I want to point out, we voted on that, two members of the council went on the ballot who voted for that, and then they were returned by the electorate. So it's not like we're, we've not had some public accountability on the process we had. It's just we have a state law that has changed, and now it will end up costing us a lot more time to do what we need to do. You all don't have to comment on that. I just, I'm...
All right. I saw Counsel Member Hawke, hand next.
It's just a small point. While we're looking at additional staffing, we have to recognize, we have to have more staffing to maintain that large parking lot as well, because, you know, that's, that's a lot more than what we would do now. So, and security needs to be out there, not just for people leaving courts, but just in general. A large parking lot, as we all know, can generate some nefarious activities. So I think you have to take that in consideration.
Good point. Counsel Member Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think we might be bleeding into Section 5 a little bit, but I think it's worth looking at the phasing a little longer. You all constructed the Morgan County Justice Center, correct? Which is a standalone facility from their sheriff's and jail facility, right? And so they're not co-located. And they, and so there is some transport and activities there. I think this gets to Counsel Iverson's question, which is, we really do need to understand those other cost models of staffing and what the cost difference between transport versus the cost of co-location is. I appreciate Counselor Decker's analogy, or at least walking through a version, or a version, of what cost could look like. Phase 2 doesn't necessarily have to be a new justice center, it could be working with our partnerships here in Bloomington to keep things downtown. We have plenty of vacant office spaces. The city bought showers west that's sitting open and vacant, that could be considered as a possible location to keep things downtown and answer some questions that many in the community have brought about the removal of the legal community from downtown and moving it three hours, three miles north of town here. So I think we need to keep in perspective that there are other costs... I think we need to keep in perspective that there are other costs other than the phasing. All of our children, Peters, myself, Jen's, transferring, be paying for this into their 30s at this point, regardless of what we do. But I don't want to pontificate here too much to say that the phase one concept and seeing what that can meet our budget or what we can do locally, what is minimally required to be met by the ACLU and other stakeholders, not just the ones that work in that building, but the ones in the community that have grave concerns about whether or not our values are being met with this facility, are all back on the menu since SB1 and the election in November. A lot has changed since then. Mr. President?
All right. I think, Council, I'm hearing correctly, we want to move on to the next conversation, but you've put a lot of work into this. It's very evident. You've put hours and hours and hours. You've listened to us and all of our griping, and you've tried to meet us where we're at. So that's appreciated. And I want to give you guys the last word. Anything else you want to add at this point before we move on to a financial conversation?
Only thing I want to add is, you see us as the face up here making this presentation, but please know that we're supported by a host of people back in the office that I kind of jokingly say do the real work. So I just want to give them the recognition as well as the recognition of the office and department members, the transition team, and all the work that they've put into it as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And just as a reminder for folks watching at home, all of the materials we've reviewed this morning are online on the county council's web, or on the county's website. So please look at this work. Thank you.
I want to make a brief comment now, because I don't want it to bleed into the next topic, because I think, I think it could. What you've seen between February and now with the difference in what it is, is fairly dramatic, right? Is a dramatic difference from one, from those two. Now, prior to the conversation we're about to have, the expectation is, there will still be some minor tweaks and changes as we move forward, but it won't be that kind of a dramatic change. I mean, we went from a two-floor facility to primarily a one-floor facility. So I just kind of want to tell you, this is the best guess we have now. I expect there'll be some really minor changes. I know that there's some discussions going on about courtroom space and things like that. But I think primarily, we don't expect those to necessarily affect the budget a lot. But just to kind of make you guys aware that, you know, this is a point where we're at today. You know, when we go to a bid, it'll be a little bit different, but not the change we've seen in the last eight months.
Good point. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, but keep in mind, after this financial conversation, it is time for public comment. So get your public comment ready here in the Nat U Hill Room. And also, for those of you joining us on Teams, when the time comes, I'll ask you to raise your hand on Teams, and we'll recognize you when that time comes. So I think now we'll transition to a conversation about financing this justice center. And we will begin with Mr. Jeff Cockrell, who has worked, again, put in a lot of hours on this as well. So can you kind of lead us off with the numbers you prepared for this meeting?
All right. And I will say, I did not put a lot of hours into these changes, because I just got the information this morning of what the new lit rates for next year is going to be. So.
Oh, he's humbled to.
So, so it was kind of fast, and these numbers have not been reviewed by Financial Solutions Group or any of the other people. I would normally have confirmed them before I make them at a public meeting. But this meeting was occurring, and I thought it would be important for you guys to have them. Essentially, what I, in the documents filed, Justice Center's funding updates 8/29/2025, you should have already seen a piece of paper with the first column, the first column of numbers on it, except that now it says 2025 lit rate. It was based upon our lit rates for this year and our bonding capacities and things like that. And the next, the next column is 2026 lit rates. I'm going to be fully honest, these are all pre-SB1 thoughts and how we were looking at things. And so I just kind of want to set that as the baseline. You know, we just heard a $224.5 million project, you know, if we were continuing to go on the, what we had, we would have the capacity to do a $243 million facility. Again, that's not been audited by anybody. That's me putting something on a piece of paper this morning, but I, traditionally, I've been pretty close. So I'm not saying that that's way off. Although that has to be way off. No, that, no, that's not. Because the next breaks it down with construction budget, debt reserve, cost of issuance and underwriting, kind of what we've seen previously. So we would be on pace if it weren't for Senate Bill 1, I guess, is what I'm, I'm trying and hoping to convey, I guess. But at the last Long Term Finance Committee, we had our financial advisors advise us on, you know, kind of what SB1 has done. And it was different than what we had thought, what I had thought before that meeting. And so I thought it was important that you guys realize this. They give three, he has three different options, and I emailed this out the other day. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it, or it was presented at that meeting, I think on August 1. The first one, I really don't like to talk about a whole lot, because that is going through a referendum process and putting an additional property tax rate on to the property taxpayers. Again, another reason I say I don't want to talk about it is because I can demonstrate that we have enough lit money coming in, and that was always the scheme all along. It's an option. I guess the, these, again, pre-SB1, we had enough. The second is what we could bond for today, with no legislative changes at all. The issues are, it's only 25% of our current lit rate, and discussing with bond counsel, we can only commit our lit up through 2027 before the kind of grand lit changes occur. So that gives us a bonding capacity. In his, it was $19.3 million. My adjustments is that's a little over $20 million, 20.3 million, based upon the increase in our current lit rates, or not rates, but the revenue we expected to receive from our, from our current rate. And, you know, honestly, I'm not sure we can get much done, if anything at all, if, if no legislative is changed based upon our ability to raise funding. Yes.
Is this a two-year bond that you're talking about?
Yes.
So it would be, I'm just, so 20,000, but we'd be, we'd be paying it off in two years?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's 20 million.
Got it.
Paid off in two years.
Oh, I, yeah. Deal, Ron!
Yeah.
Sorry.
Again, that's a decent chunk of change, but it's not the chunk of change we're talking about. And then the, and I guess thrown in here is that with the referendum, item one, if we went through that process, that would allow us to use, utilize the referendum as a tax backup and not necessarily set a tax rate. And then we could utilize lit for our primary, primary payment. And then if something went different than expected in that transition of '28 and beyond, we would have the ability to utilize that property tax backup, but it would still be subject to that referendum process.
And just real quick, before we go any further, you now see on your screens the information that started Mr. Cockrell's conversation. And Mr. Cockrell, I think, if you want to address any of this, and whoever's projecting it, can you please zoom in for those of us with old eyes?
And the youngest, old eyes, yeah. And I guess, again, caveat to, it's not been audited, and I'm not sure if it's true. Essentially, what it says, 2025 lit rates, those are the calculations we were using before SB1 on what we thought we could afford. And then the 2026 rate, there are just those numbers updated by the difference between what we expect at 1% of the rate to collect versus last year versus.
Councilmember Hawke?
So, as what happens many times with a bond issue that we do, we, the large ones, we back it up with general obligation. However, you're saying this particular one, we would not be able to do it because of the price tag of it without a referendum. So if I'm understanding you right, that means that whatever bonding mechanism we use, lease or whatever, we would not be able to back it up with property tax. We've just got the income tax to back it up, which would then cause a higher interest rate. Am I following you?
I think you're following, except the reason we can't back it up, it's got nothing to do with the size of the bond. It's got everything to do with that transition in, between '27 and '28.
Right.
On that. I mean, we had the revenue, if, the, the question is, can we, will our revenue source, can we reasonably assume that it will cover the cost and be able to pay off the debt over the course of the period of time? And given that we're dealing with a, with a revenue source that doesn't exist today, is, according to bond counsel, we cannot make that determination that that would be reasonable to expect that to be able to do, which is why we'd have to go through a referendum process, because we couldn't make the statement based upon what we have today. We can pay, we have, we can point to revenue that we feel we will pay this debt off, and we won't have to use that. So, yes, we'd have to do the referendum process to do it that length. It's not really associated with the, the amount of the bond, other than, other than the fact that the current SB1 would not allow for us to do that. So I think the end, the end of the day answer is correct. We'd have to do a referendum, go through the referendum, it would be subject to referendum. I'm trying to get the bond counsel's words correct. Subject to the referendum process. But it's, it's a combination of size and the changes brought on by SB1. And then, I guess, the final is, essentially, what changes would need to be made for us to be able to utilize the funding that we thought we were going to have moving forward? And that would be, there are really, really three different issues. One is, we're, we're subject to 25% of our lit revenue. So we, if that got extended, and we were able to bond on just a 25%, we would be in the range of 137 to 100, or from 126 to 137 million in bonding capacity, which, you know, if we spent all our cash in the, in the edit and the, and the corrections, would probably be about a 206, or 100, excuse me, 160 million projects, give or take a little bit. I didn't have time to do all that math today. So, so that's if that 25% cap was extended so that we could bond for 20 years based upon that, 25% of your lit rate. The second, if we wanted to do, if we, if we got legislation to do the full project, we were looking at, in Mr. Garretaz's presentation on the first, it was a .41 rate. .41 property or income tax rate would, would cover our debt service on this. My calculations, based on the increase, it's, it's down a little bit to .39, to .4, somewhere in that range. But it's still well above the .25, right? And so we would need to have them, the state legislature authorizes us in one way or another. I know that there are a couple of different mechanisms. The simplest to me is just allow us to use the current rate. If we can demonstrate that that rate is reasonable, and a lot, and we're allowed to commit that future revenue source towards that, the rate would be about .4, .41 is what we would need to do that. Or there's the special purpose tax, which would be kind of like our juvenile lit, which would be a separate tax from, from what we currently receive. So it would be an additional tax. And then in 2027, '28, when you guys then get the authority to levy the tax, and you would have, you would have the ability to take that into account as you're setting the rest of the tax rates. And my, my personal feeling as, as someone who likes math but doesn't like it that much, is that if we could just be able to use what we currently have, because it's, in my mind, it's efficient, at least for today. And we'd never know what tomorrow is going to bring, then that, and that would continue the plan that we had from last year before the SB1. That would be, in my mind, the preferable course if we were able to get the full, full amount to do the project.
All right, Council, that's three options and a lot of numbers. Mr. Henry, I see your hand first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep it brief. So, we had the options from FSG in the Long Term Government Finance Meeting. Jeff, thank you for walking through those again, providing some numbers. So all three options don't get us where we need to go today, basically, because we have choices to make. Going to the public for a referendum is, is democratically speaking, probably the right thing to do for a quarter of a billion-dollar project, to let the public weigh in. And yet, I can appreciate there's heartburn, probably even bringing that up. But I think that when we're talking about a project of this size for our county's history, it's not something to immediately take off the table. Option B is 10%, well, less than 10%, right? We get about 20 million started. We, it sounds like we pay our fees for what's been done. We level some land out at North Park, and we buy it, and we're basically waiting at that point. So that doesn't really get us anywhere closer to getting folks out of the building. And I presume puts us into a funnel of, well, what do we do next, once we figure out what the state legislature wants to do? Let me finish. Option three sounds a bit like we're waiting for new legislation, and we hope, and that after the gerrymandering of the state, and they get around to helping us out at some point. I think that that might be wish thinking. So I, what I hear here today is, and I want to honor, again, DLZ's work. It is a really great product that we can't pay for today. And as I heard your math, that if we look at a $137 million project, that's 40, that's 40% off, including soft costs. And if we look at .41 of the, that's a third off of the total of this, a third of our tax capability, going for 20 years to pay for this project. And those are huge differences from where we were in November of '24. So I think we need to be pragmatic and courageous and sort through this correctly to get to where we need to go. But as, I'm hearing it right now, there is no, we're putting a bet on the table and hoping in two years, we can continue with the project. And unless someone has better foresight than that on how the state legislature's going to work, I'm all ears. Thank you, Mr. President.
I guess, maybe if I can, I guess, if we, and this is a tough assumption, right? If we assume that the current schedule for lit is going to remain in the 25%, then in '28, I'm using your, I think, your scenario where we do what we can today, we leveled out, and we get the site ready. And then in '28, I think you guys would have the ability to go in and, or you would have the ability to go in and issue a bond that could build the building. The concern, when my mind is that, is I don't know what costs are going to look like in two years. And I, but I, I'm willing to bet they're going to be higher than they are today, right? So, you know, if we went with 5%, 5% a year, if you want to, I mean, you're, you're talking 20, 30 million, right? Which is a lot, right?
Yeah, they could be used to put people elsewhere in some alternatives, right? And to think through some alternatives. 30 million's a lot of money.
All right. Other council members have any thoughts?
Sorry.
This is a lot.
This is a lot of information.
The heavy, it's a heavy topic with a lot of change, and, and it's just, this is hard.
Uncertainty.
And betting uncertainty. Yes. Councilmember Hawke, I'm sorry.
Right now, we are looking at buying North Park. That's not a done deal. And it includes a caveat that we co-locate within a certain period of time. So I don't know how we close on North Park, on the purchase of North Park, or how we even move forward on, because unless that offer to purchase changes.
I think the offer to purchase is, is still there. I think we are, I think, I think it needs an additional appropriation by the county council. So you guys will have to review that, because we had earmarked the edit ban money for that purchase. And the purchase price was more than the edit ban amount was. So there's an additional appropriation that's going to be required. And so I think that's the time to have that conversation. And the document does not say we have to co-locate in order for us to purchase and begin building. It says we have to have the courts underbid before we utilize the jail for housing inmates. So, so there's a difference there.
What does that mean? I mean, does that mean all eight, does it mean all the courts? Or what does that mean? I mean, that, that.
It's two courts. Puts an ass on there, so it's got to be more than one.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, I, certainly, it does not mean public defender, prosecutor, clerk, you know. And, and I don't want to come across and say that those groups hasn't, when, when we talked about co-location in the past, you know, the courts and the sheriff and those groups, they were fairly persuasive on why co-locations is important, right? One, that topic, that's great. I would encourage you to talk to them about that and get their I would encourage you to talk to them about that and get their thoughts, because they were persuasive a year ago and two years ago on why that's important. So, given that, but the agreement does not include all of the justice-related components. It says the jail will not be open until bids are out for the courts, or accepted for the courts, one of those two.
All right. If there are no other counselors that want to make comment at this point, the public is here. Mr. Deckard.
I will. I want to hear from the public, but I do want to say this. I think we have to be very cautious as a council in not sending a reverse message to Indianapolis or legislators that are watching this or anything, that we just might be, well, maybe give up on the original plan that we actually adopted and that we don't want to do, that maybe we're just going to sit on the side of the road and not do it. We had a plan, and then things changed. We're not bumbling Keystone Cops. I said this the other night in a meeting. Sometimes there's a narrative, oh, Monroe County can't find the light switch. We found the light switch. We were heading towards it. We've employed very strong individuals. We've taken public comment a million times on this project. We've listened to counselors' input. We've responded to that. We've listened to our multiple units' input, and that will continue to happen towards an effort for costs down. But to me, if there was an onus put on anyone, it would be our friends elsewhere in the legislature who would look at this and say, you know, we've got a county that cannot move forward on a plan that it was responding to and doing. I don't want people to think, oh, there they are. They're fighting again. They can't find their key ring. And the reality is, we know this has got to get done, right? We know that it has to happen for whatever cause it is that you have. If it's constitutional care in the jail that you care about, and you're not actually someone in that jail, it is your job to advocate for people having the best conditions while they're in that circumstance. If it's our folks, it's the ease by which both a prosecutor and a public defender access a court, which then accesses those who are in the system. So all those things play into it. And I don't want anyone up north or elsewhere who might sheepishly be watching this, oh, they're fighting again, to think that we are sitting on the side of the road. We had a plan. Let us run our plan, and, you know, or give us a better option, but my gosh, counties who are local, cities who are local, townships who are local, fire departments, they have got to have the ability to do what they do, because we are the closest form of government. And that cannot get lost in this shuffle.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. We will now move to public comments. You will have three minutes. Please come up to any one of the microphones, either at the table. I don't know if the microphone in the podium is working, but there's lots of spots at the table here in the Nat U Hill Room. And if you're joining us on Teams, raise your hand. We will alternate between folks in the Nat U Hill Room talking and folks on Teams talking. So if there, I'm noticing that an individual is coming forth in Nat U Hill Room. If you could please state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Oh, TSD, you're on it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lee Grunthefer. I have some comments that I wrote down here because it's difficult for me to speak in public. Who pays for this new jail? Who pays for it? Traditionally, the people who live in a place own property and therefore pay property taxes, which are used for capital projects. Right. I own property, I pay property tax, capital project. The jail is definitely, and the justice system, definitely a capital project. The local income tax, which we refer to as lit, which is paid by people who live in and have jobs in this county, is newish, you know, newish. And fluctuation issues are still being worked out with this new tax. Why is the state of Indiana shifting the tax burden from the owners of property to the workers of a county? Why? Is it because people who live here can't afford to buy property here? Or is it because investors own property here? I don't know. Is it because of the unstable nature of lit, that the fiscal, or the fiscal irresponsibility of county council bodies across Indiana that has caused the Senate enacted Bill One to place these restrictions on lit? Well, I mean, we have to understand that hopefully the state isn't just stupid, and they've put these restrictions on county council bodies for reasons. And we know one of the reasons. We know that with Senate enacted Bill One, property taxes revenue will go down. The reduction of property tax funds in this county will impact main services provided by the county, such as roads and health department. It seems clear to me, and by design, that the future of lit revenue will need to be used to supplement the county budget for mainline services. The capital project needs to be scrapped, in my opinion, due to the changing revenue basis and the uncertainty of the political climate. Thank you.
All right. Looking on Teams to see if anybody has raised their hand. I don't see any hands raised, so we will return to the Nat U Hill Room. Please come forward. The floor is yours for three minutes.
Sorry, I also have things written down because, okay, I'm going to try to keep this under three minutes. Hi, my name is Kathleen Paquette. I have been a resident of Monroe County for 23 years. I'm a small business owner. I'm partnered with a public school teacher, and I volunteer with a few different organizations in various capacities, including doing legislative research with Hoosier Action. So consequently, I'm very aware of the financial constraints placed on us as a result of property tax reform, as well as generally decreased funding coming down from the federal level for all manner of public goods and services. I have many, many concerns about this proposed project. I believe everyone currently present here likely all agree that all of the people who are currently incarcerated in our county jail and who work in that building deserve better than they have. I'm not convinced, however, that this proposed project will lead to better outcomes for our community. First of all, I recognize that city and county government are very, very different. I'm noticing a pattern happening with our government-owned buildings. They all seem to be leaking and have mold. Buildings require maintenance. The Charlotte Zee Low Justice Building that we're currently using is not old. 40 years is very young for a building. My house is older than that. I'm older than that. Buildings require maintenance. Clearly, the current building has not been properly cared for. It is a responsibility of the county commission to maintain our county-owned buildings. What's done is done. We're here to discuss moving forward. But that doesn't mean we don't learn lessons or atone for the past. The plan presented today covers construction costs. Not, there's been some mention of the million, $11 million price tag on the land, and a little bit of discussion about increased operating costs. And also, there is maintenance on a larger building with a larger footprint, with land and a large parking lot. Currently, the city maintains the nearby parking garage for the justice building that we're in. There's no landscaping to speak of. If we are currently unable to fix leaking pipes in the building we have, why should we, as a community, trust that there are resources moving forward to landscape a sprawling complex, snowplow a giant parking lot? The reality is that we have fewer resources moving forward, thanks to our state and federal government. I do not think it is fair or reasonable to ask the people who live and pay taxes in and care about this community to trust that we will somehow find both the will and the resources to do better with less. I have many more concerns, some of which I'll list quickly in the interest of time. Moving out of our city center affects our economy. We're moving all kinds of necessary public resources from traffic courts to marriage licenses to early voting and making them inaccessible except for by car. I personally have a concern that I don't think is unreasonable in our current environment of potentially empty beds being commandeered by people who would frankly like nothing better to come and to own the libs in Bloomington by commandeering potential detention space. And just building a capacity with more beds assumes increased incarceration, and we have a declining population. We have a steady decline in violent crime. I'm sorry, am I out of time? Real quick, I'm just going to say that we have an opportunity to be a community that invests in care and services, and what's happening on a national level is, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I'm out of time. This is a microcosm of what's happening on a national level. We can invest in care rather than locking people away.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Looking for other folks that wish to make public comments. I'm looking on Teams. Please raise your hand if you'd like to discuss this very important topic. Seeing none, I'm looking back in the Nat U Hill Room. The floor is yours for three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Muchler, resident of Monroe County. I, today, am actually going to not speak to you, the council, because I feel like you've all been very gracious in hearing me. You know where I stand on this issue. I'm not going to speak to you, DLZ, today, because I noted that you had stakeholder outreach, but I did not receive any meetings, any public discussions that you had, just with members of the justice community, nor was I made aware of any meetings with folks with lived experience of incarceration. I'm instead going to speak to members of the public. In today's age of rising authoritarianism and fascism, in our age of black and brown folks being rounded up and detained indefinitely, in an age of social service agencies being seriously worried whether they'll be in operation this time next year, in an age where it is just every day harder and harder to make ends meet, if you are out there and you feel that our county needs to be prioritizing housing, mental health treatment, substance-use treatment, food security, and just making it easier to be a resident in Monroe County, if you feel that, instead of building a new mega jail, you are not alone in that feeling. There are many people who feel that the priorities of this county are going seriously off track. And so I would invite anybody who feels this way or is just curious to learn more and is sort of like, hmm, yeah, this doesn't add up, to please join Care Not Cages. We are hosting an informational session on Sunday, September 14th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Monroe County Public Library Auditorium. We will be discussing what's really going on with incarceration in our county, what are the alternatives that aren't building a new $225 million jail, and how to get involved in setting the county back on track. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comments. The mic is open if you'd like to make public comment. I'm looking on Teams and not seeing any hands. Looking in the Nat U Hill Room. I'm also not seeing anyone come forward. Give it a moment here. All right. Before we adjourn this meeting, I will remind everyone that the county commissioners meet on Thursdays, the county council meets on Tuesdays. If you go to in.gov/counties/monroe, you'll find a calendar with links to all of our meetings so you can join virtually, as well as agendas. We will continue talking about this very important topic. And the last thing I'll note is if you go to the county council's website, all of our phone numbers are on there, all of our emails are on there. Call us, email us. We work for you. This meeting is adjourned.